Yeah, there's just, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me get that out of the way.
And. And.
Push that, green is on. You see your name up there? Saban, and you see your name, you'll see the other. You too. Let it up, it's a push to hold me.
Name should show up on your. I see that you.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Monta Community College Board of Trustees for Monday, May 20th, 2024, regular meeting to order. All of you that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would like, if possible, I would like to, as soon as I find it here. I would like to move 2.08 and 2.09 up to right after the comments from the public.
Okay. Are there any objections?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Freeman?
So I have zero documentation on my board packet for items 2.07 through 2.11. There is nothing in our binder that addresses any of these motions or items.
You're right.
Okay. Michael, what was it that you wanted to?
I'd be happy to repeat that. In our board packet, we have zero documentation regarding items 2.07 through 2.11. Everything else has supported documentation around it, but we don't have anything related to this, so we have no info.
We have no what?
Information. We have no information.
201 through 207?
207 through 2.11 has, we have no documentation in new business.
Jordan?
Mr. Chair, those are items that were added after the ad hoc committee from the motions of trustee Daley, and the committee requested that they be put on the agenda as the items for approval.
Okay. I'm going to have to ask for recess for about two minutes while we get at your piece that I can use. Just a moment.
Mic check, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Does that sound better?
Okay, we have no documentation for items.
2.07 through 2.11. This is all appears to be business related to the ad hoc committee. That has not provided us with any information related to motions or business of this board.
Okay. Please help me out because I can't hear.
He's saying that there's no documentation on these items. The question is whether there needs to be documentation or not, or you can discuss it without documentation. The motion that was made is to move those two items.
Yes, the two. So those have to be done first. Take care of that first.
I apologize. Being partially deaf, it's rather difficult, and we've changed systems this meeting, so I am really not hearing what you guys say. It reverb's and does not work well for me. First thing we need to do, Michael, is take care of the motion that Jeff has, and is there a second for moving these? If there is no objection, we can go ahead and move it.
My objection pertains to the motion, which is two of the items that I just referred to that we don't have information on. So how can I make, vote for something that doesn't exist? There are two things on here that have no information, so it absolutely pertains to the motion.
Okay. So, we have information that was sent out Saturday by the administration regarding the proposed look at how we would do the search for the interim president. It was also that each of us would make our comments, and we will do a work study on that now so we can develop it to move it forward. Mr. Daley, you were at the meeting that we had to work on this, and since that's not part of the report at this point, would you like to weigh in on this so there's better understanding?
My understanding was that we were going to discuss the announcement for the position of interim president, and there had been, after the, I had received a copy of what was submitted by the administration to look at, and then there would be a follow-on discussion by the board on that, on that submission, and then with input from the board, and also our attorney.
Jeff, you were also in attendance at that meeting. Was that your understanding what we were trying to accomplish?
Yes, I thought that the, we were going to talk about requirements for the interim, and I'll discuss it, and I'll throw our heads together and come up with what we want so that that can be sent out. That's what I had.
Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, I guess my objection is in the way that it's listed under new business, and regardless of where it is on the agenda, it says approval of the promulgation and approval of release of announcement. It sounds to me like that whatever you have going on there should be addressed under the ad hoc report, and then if a motion comes of that, then that's the way that it should be handled. But putting it down there without any documentation, I did get Saturday's email, thank you, and I did read it. I didn't print it, but I read it, and if that is going to be something that we are going to be voting on, we should have it in front of us. We should have a copy of it in front of us, and that should be provided the same as any of the other, because all of these items were sent to us via email, so we could look at various things. That should have, that should have been printed here, so to have something on the agenda where we don't have it in front of us, it doesn't leave us capable of voting on that.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, if you look at these items where it's approval of promulgation of the RFP, approval of release of announcement, addressing the role of ad hoc, I didn't even get a copy of like what was proposed that the ad hoc committee would be. You know, these other items are things that, you know, really, you know, we're being asked to do some pretty significant things, and I feel like we're flying by the seat of our pants on this. And while I think that many of the recommendations are fine, and I, you know, from what I understand, trustee Daley did a wonderful job in kind of articulating process and procedure, but at the same time, I want to make sure that how we actually address this is in line with the way that we do our other business, and that this, you know, it's almost like this is becoming a working group, that we're going to come up with something with a lot of thought, or even be able to leave the table with thinking about, am I okay with this? I want to make sure that the actions that I vote on are actually well thought out, and that I can live with those things.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? See, now there's a motion that was seconded.
Second.
We have a second to move these items up to after comments from the public.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Daley is the one who seconded that already?
John had already seconded it. Okay.
Mr. Chair, is there any way that Jordan can provide those documents if we take a quick recess, so we all have them in front of us?
Jordan?
What documents are you requesting?
Well, there's 2.7, there was 2.8. In order to vote on them, I guess, 2.9, 10, and 11, unless there's something I'm missing there?
So the, so 2.07 and 2.08 are based off of the motions from trustee Daley from ad hoc committee. 2.09, there was no documentation for that, that as trustee Daley and trustee Swanson said that you get, the full board would discuss in this meeting. There's no documentation for 2.10 or 2.11. That could be printed, I guess.
Do we have these documents? Do these need to go out at this time?
That's not the administration's.
He's got to get the administration. The administration will be this one. Jordan? Jordan, he's got the other ones. He's got them, and he's supposed to be taking them down. Wendy, does this take care of what you've requested?
Yes. Could we have a couple of minutes to read this, please?
We'll be on that topic in just a minute if we vote to do this, and then people, we can take a recess while they read. Therefore, we have the documents now. We're moving the two documents under the motion that Jeff made and John seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All those signified by saying aye, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those signified by saying nay, that are opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
So we have two to five.
Mr. Chair, can you repeat what was just voted on?
What's that?
Can you repeat what was just voted on, and it was passed out papers?
What we just did was moved the two items that Jeff had requested to after comments from the public.
That was 2.08, 2.09 to be moved right before comments from the public, and that was trustee Daley. So could we get a vote for that, a roll call vote?
We had a vote, we had five to two. Mr. Freeman and Mr. Reyes were the two that were opposed.
That was just additions to the agenda, now we have to actually adopt the agenda, do we not? That, I mean, you're under additions, you asked.
Please direct your comments to the chair, Mr. Freeman.
I'm actually helping you with some procedural issues which are not being followed. We just did additions to the agenda, now we have to do adoption of the agenda.
We are doing additions to the agenda, and we've moved those around before we adopt the agenda, Mr. Freeman. Okay. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Mr. Reyes.
I have a question. Why did we move two instead of the three? Because the three are where we got the paperwork, 07, 08, 09. We got the...
Would you like to make a motion to move that?
No, I don't think the other one should have been moved.
Okay.
What number did you think?
Mr. Jeff?
Oh, I apologize.
Now, you can address, and it was why you didn't move 207.
Well, 207 is for the permanent president, and...
Okay.
The other two are for the interim.
Okay. So I'm taking the reasoning behind that, is that something we do in the future, and we're working on the interim at this point, correct, sir?
Yeah, my feeling is that 207 can wait, and I'd like to get 208 and 09 taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Are there no other additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Jeff has made a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Dale, Dr. Daley. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
I go back to my original comment, that while we did get one of these documents over the weekend, which was the interim president vacancy announcement, all of the rest of this is all foreign to me. And, you know, this is brand new, strategic planning on hold until new president is installed, no contract renewals, no appointments, or administrator hires, until approved by the Board of Trustees, until new president. This is entirely new information that I'm ill-prepared for and cannot respond to. So it will be, I will not be voting for this, because I feel we are not prepared to discuss.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
We have two nays. Do we have any communications?
No, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have, four comments have been submitted. The first one is from Ann Figaro of Mount Morris, and she'll be speaking on the topic of the Resolution 2.08 to 2.10.
Okay. In accordance with Section 1640 of the meeting procedure, Board Policy states that the board chairperson shall invite the public to address the board. All citizens who wish to address the board, or who wish to communicate with the board in writing, shall identify themselves and or group they represent, if any. They must also state their reason for addressing the board. Citizens addressing the board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless their time is increased or decreased by consent of the board. A brief supporting the remarks made by the citizen may be submitted to the board for its consideration. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm here to express my concern with the following resolutions, 2.07 to 2.10. As of today, these resolutions were not posted on the website for public review, and it appears there's lack of information even on this board. This board has proven to take an inordinate amount of time to conduct its business, and I'm afraid the college will be without an interim leader for many months. I hope that all the trustees realize that this process may take more time than committee and regular meeting schedule. This community is counting on you to do it right. In the same vein, hiring a new president is also a time-consuming activity. Please remember, these decisions will be made about the future of Mott Community College. The community will be keeping an eye on what you're choosing as requirements and scope of services to make sure that the interim and the new president is what the community wants, not just what a few trustees who have their own agenda want. My concern with Resolution 2.10, as it stands in the agenda with no documentation, is in practice an across-the-board hiring freeze, which will affect the hiring of necessary staff and negatively affect staff retention. What is the plan is if a key member of the college leaves of her, of his, leaves his or her position? Who will do the work? Will the other staff members pick up the work in addition to their own work without extra compensation? This will have a negative effect on current staff. It'll also send a signal to future employees about how the board handles issues. They will think twice about coming here to work. Finally, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the work of Dr. Beverly Walker Graffia. I had the honor of working closely with her and saw her hard work, wisdom, and insights that she used for the betterment of not only Mott Community College, but the whole of Genesee County area and the state of Michigan. She arrived four months prior to the water crisis and hit the ground running. She's not only protected our students, but worked with local officials to protect the Flint area citizens. She's always had a vision of the whole community, just not the college. She adopted Flint as her hometown. When the pandemic hit, she led the staff and faculty to be creative with online options and meeting the needs of our students. Some of these options were providing Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots, and creating a food pantry to meet the basic needs of our students. She is a nationally recognized educator and community college president, and I have been personally honored to watch her work. Thank you, Dr. Beverly, for coming to Flint and staying for 10 years. We have been truly blessed to have you here. Thank you for your service to our community. Best of luck for your future endeavors. You will always be a Flintstone.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, but before I go forward, on the agenda from the motion from Trustee Swanson, 2.08 and 2.09 come before the comments from the public.
They go after, we go after the comments from the public, is that correct?
My apologies for that. And so we have another comment that's been submitted by Jake Duffney. And the subject is "Search for a New President." "As a former student who is planning to send my kid to Mott, I am frankly embarrassed by the way Mott looks in the news and media. I've been watching as Andy Everman has manipulated his way into more power over the school board, and his behavior and scandals are an embarrassment, not only to Mott, but our entire community. I now see that Andy Everman has delegated himself to be in charge of selecting a new president for Mott, which I do not believe he is in any way qualified for. I believe that once Andy Everman selects someone to his liking, he will make the president a puppet for him to get away with even more public embarrassment that will turn Mott Community College into a laughingstock and a disgrace to our community. With Andy Everman on the school board for Mott, I will be sending my child to a college with more dignity, as well as many others. As for the board members who support him and his actions, shame on you, do better."
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Next comment's been submitted by Bobby Walton of Davis and Michigan, on the subject of managing transition.
Good evening. I was sympathetic to the argument that the public has not had access to any of the documents, or any of the information that you proposed to be voting on tonight. And I want to remind you that I've been pounding on you for over a year to pay attention to the public interest, but obviously, it has not hit the ears of this executive committee. And now I will go into my written comments. Why would any candidate for the position of president of Mott College want to work here? I've covered the actions of the chair of this board for over a year, and I can tell you, I would not want to work for someone such as he is, who does not protect the public interest and oversee a well-managed Board of Trustees. I attended the meeting of the ad hoc committee last Thursday. This committee was created by your chair to develop a process for transitioning from the ten-year, very successful leadership of Dr. Beverly to the administration of a new president. As Dr. Beverly retires from the presidency of Mott Community College, how do we transition? The first element of this process is corrupted when the chair of this board resists using all of the resources of the Mott College administrative staff to search for, attract, and hire a new president. This has been very evident, as the expenditures made by this board for their own budget seems excessive in paying for things that can be done in-house by very qualified people. Even to asking the board attorney to write up the charge, the purpose, and tasks for the ad hoc committee. The staff of the college personnel department is very capable of doing this. The second is when the chair of this board accuses the administration of not doing what he asks. Such hostility, as he expresses, would turn off any candidate for the presidency of this institution. The process of transition must follow all of the things I've tried to call to your attention over the past year. These are the laws, the rules, the regulations, the bylaws, the processes, and the procedures. All of these have a purpose. They protect the public interest. They hold elected officials and governments accountable to the people. Public interest and accountability are two more of those governing terms I keep pounding at you about. I have covered the MCC Board of Trustees for over a year. When you first took office during this term, I became aware of the criticisms I heard about the violation of the legal process to choose your executive board, fire your board counsel, and practice cronyism in hiring your new attorney. I witnessed it over the past year, and I can say the rumors are true. Do you suppose the candidates for the office of president of Mott Community College will not have heard the rumors also? And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the release of announcement for interim president as soon as possible.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have one more public comment.
One more?
It's been submitted by Sean Murray of Flint, on the subject of board negligence and community, of community base. First and foremost, the community is deeply saddened with the announcement of Dr. Beverly's... Okay. I'm sorry. First and foremost, the community is deeply saddened with the announcement of Dr. Beverly's retirement. Although it is understandable, as to the reasons of why she decided to retire, it is equally understood that she deserves to be working with intelligent and competent people who respect her. Dr. Beverly has had an illustrious career in higher education, and is well-respected within the higher ed community, unlike most of the current Board of Trustees. As a concerned member of the Flint community, and astonished supporter of Mott Community College, there are several points of concern. The current Board of Trustees, trustees, and newly-appointed board attorney are completely unqualified to be on this board, let alone to lead the hiring of a new president, with the exception of Art Reyes and Michael Freeman. The community would like to know why there's no minority representation on the hiring committee for Mott's president. We are in support of the direction that Dr. Beverly has steered the college in, and expect the new president to continue in the direction of equity, belonging, and accessibility. What are the qualifications of the board members who are on the hiring committee for the new president? Does everyone hold a higher education degree? Do the three members who are leading the charge in the search for a new president have a college degree? If not, why are these people on the board of a college and making such important impactful decisions on behalf of a college? If they themselves have no background in education, and in no formal, and/or no formal education, they clearly do not understand what it takes to manage a college and have no respect for the institution. Another point of concern is we are aware that the board is supposed to attend every board meeting, and since the current board has been in place, those meetings have not happened as scheduled. Very often, they have not showed up. Why? We deserve to know the answers. By the way, we are still waiting for an apology from Andy Everman for his vulgar and disrespectful words for the first board, very first board meeting. Our community deserves better, or deserves, expects, and demands answers and representation. That concludes public comments.
Thank you very much. Item 2.08, approval of release of announcement for interim president as soon as possible. There are two documents. The one that was received Saturday, the board subcommittee, when we met, we had requested that the document that was used the last time an interim was used at the college, that we could review that. This is not that document. The attorney was instructed to work on one. That is the other document that you have. And I will now pause the meeting for a couple of minutes, so that you can review each document, and then we can move forward with this, with what needs to happen on this. We are now at ease for three minutes. We're at ease. What's that?
I would like to speak.
I put us at ease for three minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear what the president has to say, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman.
I would like to hear what the president, she raised her hand, I would like to hear what she has to say.
We can't, after you've reviewed the documents, and I put us at ease for three minutes.
I make a motion that Dr. Beverly be allowed to speak.
We're at ease, Mr. Freeman, you're out of order.
We have a, we have a motion made and support.
At three minutes, we'll reconvene. Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman.
I'm sorry, didn't you, can you enunciate, please? I can't hear you.
I put the board at at ease, at 6:01. I put a board at at ease at 6:01 for three minutes.
For, what do you want to do for three minutes? I can't hear what you're asking to do for three minutes.
Okay. For three minutes, you have the opportunity to go over the two documents that have been given to you.
Yeah.
So that we can have input from each one, and we can do question and answer, and look at these, and decide how we would like to move forward with this.
But I'm gathering that Dr. Beverly has something to contribute, which will lend clarity to whatever statement you just made. Is this true? Yeah, so she would like to give you, if you have said anything in error, she will provide you with any of the information. So I think it's pertinent to our three-minute review, that we're going into this review with accurate information. Are we not?
Well...
Can you at least extend that courtesy at her last meeting? Can you please extend her the courtesy of correcting whatever information may not be correct?
Michael, can you restate that motion? Will you restate your motion?
I said, I make a motion to allow Dr. Beverly to contribute whatever information which is pertinent to the conversation that we're having in this part of the agenda.
And I seconded it. I seconded it. Was that, Jordan, before I put the board at at ease, or after?
So you made the announcement that you go into recess, and then Trustee Freeman made the motion.
So it was after I put the board at at ease. So, we're almost done with the three-minute timeframe. As soon as it finishes, we'll reconvene, and then your motion will be considered.
Mr. Chair, this is out of order. Like, a motion has been presented, it was seconded. I think that you need to call the vote on this. Ask for discussion, call the vote.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Chair, call the question, please.
There's a motion on the store, it has been seconded. Is there any debate? All those in figure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, by nay. The ayes have it. Dr. Beverly? Dr. Beverly?
I was going to share that at the meeting, we were asked for many documents that during the ad hoc meeting report we were prepared to share with the Board everything that we were asked for. It's all put together in these files. The announcement was based on the interim job description that is in the folder, which is how you do the job announcement. The job announcement that was put together is one that is also based on the same qualifications as this position is now. When you are looking at whatever has been put together by somebody else, the job credentials have changed. And now it's saying it's a bachelor's degree. And you can't do that, which I said during the first meeting, you have to go by what is in the original job description. You make the change for the next position as you build that. And so this one is not the one you can use. It has to be built on the job description that exists at this moment.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly.
Have you completed your comment, Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Thank you very much. As to Dr. Beverly's comment about the bachelor's degree, in accordance with the authority set forth in MCL 389.124, we are only required to have somebody with a baccalaureate degree. However, when you read the document for interim president, we do talk about the importance of having a master's or preferred a PhD. So we only published in this what it says in the Michigan Community College Act. That is not what the college wants to do, I would assume, but that's the decision of this Board. Dr. Beverly, you have a question?
I don't have a question. I have a statement again. It may say that in the Community College Act, but this position right now requires a master's degree with a preference for a PhD. You can't make the change for this position. You have to make it for the next position. Right now, you already have a position that is set with what the role is and what you're supposed to be doing. The credentials are there. It's been set. You can't come and now change it because now it's a whole nother position, and you do that as you plan for your next president.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, Dr. Beverly? Any other comment? So as we get back to the document in question, clearly it states that, that it is a master's, PhD preferred. You have your three minutes to go through it. I'm sure you've all seen that. If you would like further comment from the Board Attorney regarding this, Mr. Brickley, is there any enlightenment that you could share with us on this document?
The only thing I can indicate is that the Michigan Community College Act sets forth the minimum requirements for the Chief Executive Officer of a community college, which indicates that a minimum of bachelor's degree. I do not believe that the law provides, gives the college, nor the Board, nor the administration, any authority to change what the legislature has indicated. It is a minimum requirement, as you indicated. The preferred qualifications indicate otherwise. To put in a minimum requirement that exceeds what the legislature's indicated could possibly subject the college to some legal liabilities by indicating you are, in essence, exceeding the authority granted by statute to the college. Again, it does not mean that your eventual candidate would only have a bachelor's degree. It simply indicates the minimum requirements as law is allowed by law and simply recognizing the qualifications that the legislature has indicated in the Michigan Community College Act.
Thank you. When you go to the third page, it starts minimum qualifications.
Andy.
Which is where Dr. -- yes, Mr. Reyes.
Does the law prohibit? Does it expressly prohibit us? From, you said you believe that the legislator, the legislature thought one thing, but does the letter of the law prohibit us from saying that for this position, which is an existing position? Because we're doing an interim president to replace the president who is retiring. Is there a prohibition for us as a college to say master's degree is the minimum?
I do not believe that the law prohibits you from hiring somebody or making a preferred qualification for somebody with a master's degree or doctorate degree or some other advanced degree. But I do believe that in order to meet the guidelines of the statute, that when you're listing minimum qualifications, that it would be unadvisable to exceed the statutory guidelines that's set forth by the administration. By the legislature, I'm sorry.
Dr. Beverly, you have a question or comment?
I have another comment. And if that were true, then across this state, we would have all of the searches that have been done just in the last 10 years. There have probably been about 35 to 40 for presidents. And maybe that's too high, but they've been turning around really, really quickly. And I have never seen in Michigan where we have had a president minimum credential be a bachelor's degree. So I question how this has been going on, at least for the 10 years I've been here, that all of a sudden it's changed. And I am not on the Board, but I would, you know, really like a legal review, you know, of that because I just I just don't understand it. So if there was something wrong, it would seem like it would have already come out. It's it's never been done like that across this state. When you look at what's lined up, almost always, master's degree, PhD preferred. So I hear the part about, you know, that law from the 60s. But I'm telling you, that would mean that everybody would have been breaching it for many, many years. And I just can't believe that that's true. I just can't.
Michael Freeman, before you go forward, I will finish my comment. The minimum qualifications are as such listed. They are in the Michigan Community College Act. They are listed to show what the Michigan Community College Act states, which you will find at the bottom of the second page where it says preferred qualifications. And in that, you'll have to turn to the next page. And when you do, you will find at number five, an earned master or doctorate from an accredited institution. That is our preferred. All the Attorney has done is shown what it says in the Michigan Community College Act so everyone would understand the minimum standards. That does not mean that this college or any other in the state of Michigan would hire somebody with a baccalaureate degree. We are all looking for the best possible candidate. Art, before you go, Mr. Freeman was the next person to speak.
So I'm concerned when I hear a legal counsel say, "I believe" versus "I definitively know." I understand that that's good cover for, you know, there's a maybe out there, but we don't know how big the maybe is. And quite honestly, it's like, you know, recently, we've heard all this conflict with the Michigan Community College Act and our own bylaws, or like even the procedures within the college. But then I guess we really do need to have an expert in higher ed who can kind of look or do the analysis of procedures on top of our bylaws because there are procedures that we follow, where I've heard repeatedly that this is not, you know, that's not what the Community College Act says. Well, fortunately, we've been doing it, and quite honestly, it's like, I have a lot of questions, and I guess I don't, I am concerned that we're not being counseled appropriately, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Reyes?
I reiterate my question. I reiterate my question. Does the MCL prohibit us from having a higher standard than what the MCL sets as its minimum? Because there are plenty of examples of laws where a minimum is set, but another body, as long as they don't undercut them. We couldn't all of a sudden decide that we want somebody, or we could minimum requirement is an associate's degree. But this college has established that the minimum requirements for this college is a master's degree, okay? With preferential to a doctorate degree. And by the way, you're, there's a misspelling on number five. It says maters, an earned maters or doctorate from an accredited institution, so that should be changed. But OSHA to my OSHA is just an example that comes to mind. Federal safety standards are set. Michigan's are a higher standard. So I ask again, does that law prohibit us from having a higher standard than what they've set as its minimum?
So with respect to your example of OSHA to my OSHA, both the federal government and the state of Michigan have legal authority to set working standards and the like. And the state of Michigan has the authority to exceed the standards that's set forth by the federal law. So with respect to the Community College Act, and again, let me reiterate that the role, my role as legal counsel is to provide legal advice with respect to trying to advise you as to what the law is and give you my recommendations. What you guys do with it is up to you, what you folks do. And the likelihood of you posting this saying, without this language in there, and saying that as a minimum, you require a master's degree, the likelihood of a claim being brought against the college by somebody who only has a bachelor's degree and who was never considered is probably very small. But my role as your attorney is to provide you with legal advice that, given the way the statute reads, which requires at a minimum a bachelor's degree, I don't think it hurts to put that in there, but then as you have, you have the preferred qualifications where you can add on to that. You have every right to hire somebody with a master's degree. You have every right to hire somebody with a doctorate degree. You have every right to say that because somebody only has a bachelor's degree, they're not going to get the job. You have those rights. What I'm trying to do is to avoid the situation where somebody who wants to apply for the job and who only has a bachelor's degree feels that they are not being allowed that right when the statute only indicates bachelor's degree. You could, the committee or the Board as a whole can take that and say, it's not, it doesn't satisfy me, and I don't want to consider that person for the job because they don't have the necessary applicant, the necessary educational qualifications. That's fine. You can do that. All I'm doing, all I did with this document was to indicate what I thought the statute indicated, what the legislature of the state of Michigan indicated was the minimum requirements. You guys have the right, in your decision-making process, to exceed that in hiring somebody. But I believe when it comes to the posting of the job and telling people who only have a bachelor's degree they shouldn't apply, that there's a very there's a possibility, and I'm not saying it's a great possibility, that a claim could be brought against the college by somebody who believes that they were not given the right consideration because the statute indicates one thing, and you guys have indicated something greater. That's my role.
Are there any other comments? Any other comments? Art has just spoken. If anybody else would like to speak before, I call on him a second time. If not, I go back to Art. I acknowledge you.
You said you were, okay. I have a question regarding the two announcements. If the second announcement was just written to clarify what our attorney's opinion is that we should not exclude someone with a bachelor's degree, why are they so vastly different? So I'd like to draw attention to that. And I'd also like to make a motion that the draft posting that we accept, the posting that we accept is listed, has been handed out to us, and it says draft posting under Mott letterhead.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Seeing no second to the motion, the motion fails for lack of a second. The item that we have left is the interim president vacancy announcement that we have been debating. Is there a motion to accept that announcement and move forward with that? Mr. Reyes?
I move that we release the announcement that is that is under the Mott Community College letterhead that says draft posting at the top.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion for this. We now have a second from Mr. Freeman. Are there any other comments? Any other questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
No.
Wendy?
There are some things that I would like to change on this, so no.
John Daly?
No.
Sue Couch?
No.
And myself is no. This document has now failed. As I said a moment ago, yes, Mr. Swanson?
The document that we just voted on, there's only, I've only got a couple problems with it. On the minimum qualifications, a combination of education, training, and experience in a community college setting, I would like to add, or, a private outside business.
Which document? Are you speaking of this one? This one is done?
Yes.
This done? That's done? That's done? We voted that down?
I understand. I'm just telling you my objections to it, and maybe we can come to some agreement here.
Okay. We have before us that if you guys want to make a motion for this one, you can make a motion, or we go back to committee. Just a minute. Let me consult.
Yes, sir. He indicated he wants to make a motion on this with amendments to it, so.
Okay. Do you want, as I understand that?
What I want to do is discuss that, is what I would like to do.
Okay.
I'm just voicing my, I'm sorry, Bill.
My suggestion is to make a motion with amendments and then state what your amendments are. State a motion that you would like to approve this with amendments and then state what your amendments are.
We don't discuss it. We can't discuss it first.
We've had, I ask if there was discussion. Since there was none, and then we voted. We voted it down and out. So now we're back to the other document. Okay. Is there a motion to accept this one and use this to move forward for the interim president vacancy announcement? Is there a motion? Okay. Is there a motion? One last time. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? John, did you make a second?
Could you repeat the motion, Mr. Chair?
The motion is to adopt item interim president vacancy announcement, which is this document that the Attorney submitted to us. And that we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for review only.
We have a second for review.
Mr. Chair, can Trustee Couch say the motion again, please?
So we have a motion to.
Motion, but can you state the motion?
I make a motion to use this.
I make a motion to use this, and this.
Interim president vacancy announcement?
Yeah.
So you, you motion to adopt the interim president vacancy announcement?
Okay.
Correct? And then Trustee Daly, do you second that?
Is there anybody else that would second it before we go to what Mr. Daly wants to do?
I just want, if I, if I could, in order to discuss this at the board level, we need a motion to bring it in for discussion. If we don't have a motion and it dies, that means it's not considered and we're back at square one. So I believe we need to discuss this, and for that reason, I second this motion.
Okay.
To get it on the floor, so we can discuss it as a board.
Okay. Discussion.
So I will make the motion to discuss the interim president vacancy announcement?
Let me make sure we've done something correctly. Bill, we have the motion.
Did it second?
That is properly seconded. Okay. So Daly has properly seconded. Now it's discussion. So Mr. Daly, you want to have discussion on this document. Could you tell us your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, first of all, that when the ad hoc committee, and I'll go back a little bit and talk a little bit about the ad hoc committee, one of the things in when the three of us met that we were absolutely consistent on was that the ultimate decisions on anything had to be made by the full board, that the only thing that we could do was really recommend and present an alternative. And that's what's been presented here. It's got that, the process that we would follow, I think, with any motion is, first of all, have somebody recommend that we consider it, it gets seconded, and then it gets voted on, and then we can discuss it. And I think that whether we wind up adopting this or something else that may be a modification of this, or something else entirely, we need to have the discussion, that there needs to be some structure in this process. And the only way that the board can get it up for discussion, and I believe, is through the motion process.
Any other comments? Mr. Reyes?
Who wrote this second announcement?
That was the attorney that did that, though, Brickley.
Okay. If I may follow up?
Yes, you have a follow-up question?
Yes. If the only reason for writing a new one, rather than just changing the minimum qualifications on the other, was to add the bachelor's degree, or, and I do see where it also says private sector experience, why is the rest of the body so different?
You mean, if you're referring to the spacing? The spacing was done that way so that when you had your three minutes, you could make notes?
No, not the spacing, the verbiage.
The what?
The actual wording of the two differ greatly.
I think we have two different attorneys that wrote this. There was a different attorney that wrote this document, and then we have Attorney Brickley writing this document.
Right, I understand. And Attorney Brickley indicated that the reason that it was redone was because his opinion is that we would be in violation by not including bachelor's degree. My question is, why is it so, the two are completely different. This one goes into a little bit more detail about the college than this one does. This one, and I'm wondering why they're so different. If, if there were just a couple of issues with this, why were those issues not addressed on this when one was written, it appears to be wholesale difference?
Okay. I'm going to direct this question to Mr. Brickley.
All right, so, over, over the, pretty much over the course of this morning, I received some comments from some board members about some of the concerns that they had regarding this, and I was asked to make some additions to this for the purpose of your discussion tonight. So, the reality is, is this document that I prepared is, in almost all respects, it's probably 90% of what the administration had prepared and was on their draft posting that has been voted down. I will tell you specifically some of the changes made. The first paragraph, one, one concern raised was, the announcement prepared by the administration didn't really give any preface as to why this interim position was being posted, so I added the following language. "The president of Mott Community College is retiring after 10 years of service effective July 1, 2024. As a result, Mott Community College invites applications for the position of interim president. The person selected for this position will serve as interim president of Mott Community College until the position of the president is filled as otherwise determined by the Board of Trustees." It was felt by some of the folks that expressed their concerns to me that this was not made clear throughout the reading of the one prepared by the administration. So I put that as the first paragraph, so that anybody reading this knows exactly what the situation here is at the college and what this position is. The other thing that I made sure to emphasize in this, again at the request of several board members, was that it wasn't real clear, as expressed by some of the members, as to who the interim president will report to. So I made it clear that pursuant to the laws of the state of Michigan, pursuant to your policies, that the interim president reports to the Board of Trustees. I put that sentence in there. That was there on the beginning of the second paragraph. The rest of the, the language set forth within this agreement is exactly from the, the document prepared by the administration, including the position summary, with, with the exception that the position summary set forth by the administration said also required is working successfully with union leadership, actively engaging the community, and participating in volunteerism, et cetera. Again, because of the concerns raised to me, I added also required is working successfully with the Board of Trustees, union leadership, actively engaging the community, and participating in volunteerism. Again, that is consistent with the language of the Michigan Community College Act, consistent with your board policies and procedures. We've had the discussion regarding the minimum qualifications. Again, some concerns were raised there, and I think those have been discussed. Otherwise, I left the, the only other change I made to the agreement was, it says the position will have an employment contract. I simply indicated adding to that, the terms, including salary and benefits, are negotiable depending upon the candidate's qualifications. The hired candidate will be required to reside within 20 miles of the college district during the time of the employment. That was a concern raised to me as well, that they didn't want some interim president working remotely. So I threw those in there based upon concerns raised to me. Again, this is for you folks to go through and to discuss, cross out, add to, however you want to do it. I was simply relating what the concerns were to me, and those were the changes that I made based upon the concerns that were raised to me.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Freeman?
So, item number two says administrative experience in either education, government, nonprofits, or private enterprise. While I know that this is interim, I guess, for me, it's like, why can't we just articulate higher education experience if they're to run a higher ed organization? I mean, I'm assuming that just because someone's a doctor and, you know, you broke a leg, you don't go to a dentist, do you? You go to a doctor who knows how to set the leg, right? So, I mean, for me, it's like... So it boggles my mind, kind of, we are a body of people who have zero experience with higher ed, right? No one here has ever run a higher education institution. And yet, we seem to be fairly prescriptive about our expectations, and as if we know better. And we don't. And sometimes we don't even trust the person who has led us, which has been a grave mistake, because in the end, it's our learning curve, and we're not always right. So, I think it's okay to up the bar a little bit, and, and have somebody here who actually knows higher ed, private enterprise. I wouldn't dream of it. I actually meet the qualifications for this, right? I, I mean, you know, a number of people here meet the qualifications, but I wouldn't dare dream of ever trying to run it, because I would be an abject failure. So, I, I think we should really be always working to entice the best and brightest, and this is a very low-bar description.
Mr. Chair? Swanson?
The only problem I have with, the bachelor's degree, I understand why you put that in there, because of law, but you know we're not going to hire somebody with a bachelor's degree. I, I would have no problem changing that to a minimum of master's degree. But I, in all honesty, Michael, the private sector experience, that opens it up. Who, you know, nobody's saying that we're going to hire somebody with that experience, but I think we want to look at them, look at all the people that apply. And that's my own opinion.
Thank you. Dr. Daly?
I think that the purpose of this is, first of all, that the first cast of the Nats should be as wide as possible. It should, the scope of that search should be. And I will tell you, I'm extremely, whether I, I agree with the discussion about that there probably has never been a president that was hired that had less than a master's degree in Michigan. However, to put something in there that is contrary to the state's law, and not particularly just some law that sits in the corner, the, the law that governs the operation of this organization, I'm concerned about that. Those of you that follow anything, read the Wall Street Journal last week, you'll see that Red Bull lost a, it was Red Bull, I think, or Wings, they advertised Wings originally, W-I-N-G-S, that Red Bull drink would give you wings, and they were sued by an individual who didn't get wings. And that's the reason they had to change the logo after, along with a $150,000 settlement fine. They had to change it to W-I-I-N-G-S because of that. So you need, we need to be careful that we comply with the law. Art, as you know, the, from your experience in labor relationship, Michigan law doesn't tell you so much what you can do, it tells you what you can't do. There's not going to be any law that they're going to set forth that prohibits that normally. In fact, the case that our attorney cited with both Michigan law and the federal law concerning the Environmental Protection Agency and the, the regulation of environmental is, is exactly correct, that both parties have the authority to do that. The feds gave all the states the authority to adopt something that was more stringent than federal law, not less than that. And they had to have that authority first before they could do it. And this is sort, this is, to me, this is sort of like a fishing expedition, and I like to put, I think we ought to put the line in the water and see what the response is that we get. And before we get too far, I would just point out one historical preference. Dwight Eisenhower never had an earned graduate degree. And when he was, when he was retired from the, when he retired from the US Army, after leading this, leading the military forces in Europe in World War II, his first job was as president of Columbia University. So we don't know what we're going to get, and rather than cut something out from being considered, I think the prudent approach is to leave it as wide as possible, and then with the applications that we get, select the one that is the most suited for this, for this institution and this community.
Are there any other comments? I have one. And this goes back to what Mr. Reyes said, and it is on the preferred qualifications, and it's item number, it's number five, where we have the word misspelled, let's make sure an earned major or doctorate from an accredited institution. So how do we correct that, since there's a motion there, so that that's done correctly, in case there's a spelling error elsewhere?
The motion should reflect the change in correcting the spelling error.
Okay. So, Sue, you had made a motion, and now I guess what I'm asking is, would you like to change the, the mirror and the spelling at item number five, or earned major, or, or, or doctorate from an accredited institution, an earned master, or doctorate from an accredited institution? Is that okay with you, to add that to your motion? Would you like to do that?
Repeat that again to me, Andy.
Okay, earned masters or a doctorate from an accredited institution? Yes?
Well, I think that we should leave it like the law states, because we don't...
But this is on number five. This is our preferred...
Sue?
You start on page two.
He's saying that the spelling, at number five, the spelling is wrong, and it says maters.
Yeah, and it should say...
And it's supposed to say masters.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's mis-spelled here. It says matters, yes. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And Mr. Daly, does your second still stand? Does your second still stand?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So do we have any further discussion? Roll call vote to adopt this document for our interim president vacancy announcement. Roll call vote. Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Reyes?
No.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Wendy?
I just want to say, Mr. Daly did make some valid points there. However, my vote is yes. But I personally, myself, would not vote for anybody other than a masters and hire.
Mr. Da, Dr. Daly?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The document has now passed for the interim president vacancy announcement. Addressing the, of the role of the ad hoc committee. Do we have a document on that? Pardon? It's already passed around. Okay. Are there any questions about this document? Is there a motion to accept this document?
Second.
Second it?
Yeah.
Mr. Daly motioned it. Do we have a motion and second? Do we have any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
I believe I'm the only person on this board who was here during the presidential search, the last time, 10 years ago. And this was a process that Dr. Schenk and staff worked with the board to work out and articulate, and it was a very good process. There was a community component to this as well. So it was foundation people, members of clergy, faculty, staff, a cross-section of our entire community who was involved. When we had the litany of applications that came in, we as a group reviewed all these, you know, like myself and Chair Carty were, you know, we led the process as the representatives from the board. But we wanted to make sure that we got input from the community, so we had somebody who everybody would be proud of and who would, you know, they feel like were in touch with the many facets of our community. The way that this ad hoc committee design excludes that, so it is now the ad hoc committee which will do the narrowing down to the five. So, it is now the ad hoc committee which will do the narrowing down to the five as I read this. So, it appears that there will not be a community input component to this. While it is ultimately our decision, and when we actually made the decision the last time, the board made the decision, it was the final four, that we then did interviews with directly, we talked to them, you know, actually, we ended up going to, when Dr. Beverly was apparent that we were going to choose you, we actually went out to a site visit on their campus so that we could talk frankly to everybody in the college about their experience with Dr. Beverly. It was a, it was a very good process. It was one that Dr. Schenk, at the end, looked at us and said, "You chose the right candidate." This is the, after we had made our decision, he said, "You did, you did this well. You chose the right person." So, in, in looking at this, and now, mind you, we went through a process where we can actually say, "This is about how long it took," right? So, if I were to go back and look at even a timeline for doing this, I would look back at how long did it take us the last time to find the best candidate? So, I would say that the design is already there, a design that predates Dr. Beverly that worked very well for the college. And the community was very excited, and they were engaged, and they had input that even I didn't, you know, I didn't think of, but they thought of that. And so, you know, this collaborative process amongst, and I was very grateful that there were even faculty members and staff members of the college who were involved in that process because they're the people who will be working for the new president. So, it's their contribution of like what they would like to see. And, and so, quite honestly, with this process within the, if the ad hoc committee chooses to throw out a perfectly good example of how this is done, where we did engage an expert in higher ed recruiting, right? You just don't go to any recruiter. You have to go to the person who knows of the 1,200-plus community colleges in this country. She knew where to go. She could check references. She studied, you know, she found out, is there anything, anything in the past that we should be concerned with? She found all this stuff, and quite honestly, it was a heavy lift even with massive support. Support from the college, support from our recruiter. I don't think we should go into this blind, and I do share concerns with, if we don't do this professionally and extremely well, what will the candidates think who are looking at possibly working in this college? You know, if they're only going to talk to the board, I, I, I'm nervous about, you know, like, maybe they should talk to me, get some vetting from other people than just ourselves. It's not giving any control. If we have the final determination and say who it's going to be, but it appears that the design of this committee, it, it falls a little bit short of the process that we followed before, and that's disappointing to me. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Swanson.
Michael, I, I think this, this is set up for the interim. It's, it's not for the permanent, huh?
Please, Director, comments to the board.
We're tackling the interim first.
But you'll decide how it's run in the future, though, yeah? Yeah?
I'm sorry?
You'll decide, then, you're going to make the recommendation on how we do the presidential search?
That's not even being discussed right now.
Well, then, I would suggest it, you seriously consider what was done before because it worked.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah.
But the interim's the important one right now.
Yeah, it doesn't feel like that. Quite honestly, at the last meeting, when we were actually celebrating Dr. Beverly, and then it was automatically said, "This is who's going to do it. The ad hoc committee is going to do the search for the president." That's what was said. So, my assumption is, is that the ad hoc committee will make the decisions on how the search is done.
That's not the intention of this.
Dr. Daley.
Just to, to clarify a little bit, Trustee Freeman, we went down, we went, the ad hoc committee went down, and we got wrapped around the same axle that you just did with regards to the confusion of those two searches. And it was not clear to us exactly what, in other words, the, there was a vote to establish the ad hoc committee, but when we got to what does the ad hoc committee do, things became very gray all of a sudden. And we took it about as far as we could do it at that single meeting with regards to the interim, and then we had discussion amongst the three of us, and the consensus was, from all three, that we needed to come back to the board and clarify what the ad hoc committee was doing. I think your points about ensuring that we have community involvement in the president's search are well taken, because clearly, this is not, this is not an ivory tower organization. This is an organization that is very much a part of this community. Dr. Beverly has done yeoman's service in moving that along, and we certainly want to see that continue with whoever is her replacement, and that will be a very difficult set of shoes to fill. But the intent was not, I can assure you, not that the ad hoc committee would sit there and try to do what essentially is the board's job.
Also, I'd like to point out that it says in the document that you have, "In the event a trustee believes a candidate or candidates should be considered by the full board, but they are not among the top five candidates as chosen by the ad hoc committee, that the trustees may make a request of the full board of trustees to consider the candidate or candidates. And if agreed by the majority vote of the board of trustees, that candidate or candidates shall be subject to consideration and interviewed by the full board of trustees." We have tried to be inclusive. We're trying to make sure everybody has the opportunity. If you feel somebody has inadvertently been shunned, that they are part of the process and have the opportunity. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Chair, can we have Trustee Daley restate the motion, just so everybody's on the same page?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that because it doesn't work?
I said, could, can Trustee Daley restate the motion so everybody's on the same page, has a lot of discussions, and we'll make sure that the, the motion is stated.
My intent wasn't a motion, it was clarification of, of how we got where we are with this. And that's what I wanted to make clear was, the intent of the ad hoc committee, believe me, from square one, was that the driver in this is, we need, we clearly need input from the community. We discussed that, we didn't know how to go about that, what, what, what had been done in the past, what's currently there. And we also didn't, it wasn't clear to us that the board, the board collectively wanted this group of three to move further beyond what we did at that meeting. And so, that was the reason we were coming back to say, hey, let's clarify what, let the board clarify what it wants us to do. And this was a suggestion, and it's a work, it's a working document.
So, the motion, the motion as I see it is to continue the ad hoc committee created on April 22nd, 2024, and to empower the ad hoc committee with the following responsibilities, as the document says. Is that your motion, Dr. Daley?
In order to get it to the floor for discussion, yes.
Yes. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Swanson. Any further discussion?
I have one thing, and this, this is a follow-on to what I was saying earlier. Get it, we get it to the floor for discussion. If there's something in here that needs to be changed, then that's, this is the time to, to suggest that. You know, if you want to have a further discussion about the selection of candidates, you know, my, my feeling is that the, my own personal view is that those, the, the bigger number we have at the beginning, the bigger the sort, the sort is, and the more likely it is we find the right person. And then we get, we have the board. I would suggest the board decide how that's going to go, and a follow-on decision that has to be made is what's going to be the role, if any, of a, a professional career hunter in this.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Reyes?
It, it doesn't say on this document, and it, and it wasn't discussed at the last meeting, but this ad hoc committee is expressly for the purpose of finding the interim, making a recommendation to the full board on the interim, so then it would be dissolved after that is being, after that is done, and a new committee.
That's, that, that, that's exactly the type of question that we were kicking around ourselves, is, okay, what's next? And we realized, the consensus of the board was a feeling of discomfort about moving beyond that without further direction from the board as a whole. Certainly, we can't make that type of, all we can do is make a recommendation if the board chooses they want us to do that.
Right.
But that's within the purview of the board, particularly with regards to the search for a president.
Right. Mr. Reyes, you had other comment?
Yeah, so, I guess then the question may be directed specifically to the, the chair. Let's say we, we, this passes, and you guys come up with the five candidates, and we narrow it down, and we elect a interim president. My question is, is this the same committee that will lead the effort for the permanent president? Because I stated my concern at the last meeting that this committee lacks diversity. And so, I want to know whether, I want to know whether ad hoc is for a specific purpose. When ad hoc committees are put together, it's for a specific purpose. And I'm asking, is this specifically just for the recommendation and hiring of the interim president?
Okay. Dr. Beverly had a comment.
It's actually a question now. In looking at this, and I think I expressed this during the meeting, that the ad hoc committee has turned into the screening committee, and that was why I was trying to figure out exactly what the charge was of the committee. So, if the ad hoc committee is turning into the screening committee, then where does the personnel committee fit in? Because I would think that Wendy would be a part of this, and she's the chair. So, I'm, you know, just trying to figure all of that out because she should, she's the personnel chair, so to me, she should be a part of this.
Any other questions or comments?
And we did have discussions concerning the fact that the role of the ad hoc committee was more, more in formulating structure than, and process than anything else. It was not, not in the actual selection process of, oh, this individual as opposed to this one. It was not, I don't believe that was the intent of the board when they established this committee.
Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Right, but number five addresses that, it says to recommend to the full board of trustees that if the candidates it considers to be the top five candidates, so I'm assuming that they're, that it is the ad hoc committee. So, in fact, you are screening, the ad hoc committee is, is screening the, the candidates, the way that I read number five.
Make sure you're turned on, Mr. Daley.
I think this is in line with the fact that the ad hoc committee was asking for direction from the board and where to go, and this is a straw, I see this as a straw man that was put forth, and if you want, if there's changes that need to be made that the board wants, then let's make the changes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I do. I guess, would you consider turning it to the personnel committee to do the screening?
If that's the, I personally think that's a good idea. If we want to, if the board, if that's the direction from the board, that's, that's the way it should be. But the ad, the hot committee should not be the ones that's making the decision to send it to the personnel committee. That's, from my perspective, that's a board decision.
Any other comments? Seeing those, Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I, I support that as well. I think it's a great idea. I think Wendy has a temperament, you know, ask good questions, you know, I think she listens to everybody. I think that, you know, she's shown that in the community as well, that, you know, she wants to do the right thing for the college. So, I think that, that to me, it should fall into the purview of personnel committee.
Mr. Swanson.
The, the full board will get copies of all the resumes and, yeah.
Yes, and if the subcommittee brings five forward, and someone else on the board who has looked, because we're all going to be, have the opportunity to look at all resumes and say, "I would like these candidate or candidates to also be considered by the full board." It will be done. That's part of this motion.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none, other questions or comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes.
No.
Mr. Chair, can I restate the motion?
Mr. Chair, what?
Can I restate the motion?
I'm trying to go back to go to, are you going to restart the motion for us?
Yeah. Trustee, Trustee Daley motioned to approve to continue the ad hoc committee created on April 22nd, 2024, and to empower the ad hoc committee with the following responsibilities provided in the document. And then Trustee Swanson seconded the motion.
Okay. Roll call vote, and Mr. Reyes.
I believe that the personnel committee should be the ones who do number, at least number five. And because of that, I'm voting no.
Okay. Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I, I as well think that the personnel committee can handle these responsibilities, and I would add to that they provide or make sure that all board members receive a copy of all applications. There, yeah, I think everybody, you should, everybody should have all the applications that come in, and even if there is a top five recommendation, it's just a recommendation of the group, and then the board can actually then weigh in and say, "Well, I think a little differently." They might not agree. So, I think everyone having the information's a good idea. So, I will vote no on this.
Mr. Swanson.
Yeah. I, I agree with Mr. Freeman on this, is the full board is going to vote on them. And it really doesn't matter who goes through, as far as the committee. We can, we can do what we want there, so I'll vote no.
Wendy?
No.
John? Sue?
Yes.
Since everybody else is explaining their vote, I will explain mine. I vote yes, because you need to have a subcommittee to keep shepherding the item through. Without the subcommittee, things can fall by the wayside, as this board well knows. So, I vote yes, and is everybody else comfortable with their vote?
Could you explain that a little bit better, Andy?
Okay. You need a subcommittee to keep things on schedule, to continually pushing the process forward to make sure it doesn't fall by the wayside. We've had that happen in the past. You need a subcommittee to keep things on schedule, to continually pushing the process forward to make sure it doesn't fall by the wayside. We've had that happen in the past.
Mr. Chair, can you please give us the vote? Can you give us the tally, please? I like the tally of the votes.
Mr. Freeman, you are out of order. Mr. Freeman, you are out of order. I am answering a question. Therefore, the, the explanation to why I voted yes, and then I have asked if everybody is happy with their vote before we declare it.
The only concern is timing. The personnel committee, will they meet, I think we're, we're given, what, two weeks for all the responses. Will the personnel committee meet as soon as that's, whether it's special meeting or, or what, to go through them? All right, because time is, is important here. Okay.
Okay. The motion has failed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Daley.
I'd like to move, I'd like to, oh, no, this.
We now move to special presentations. The vote, yes.
With, with this.
I feel that in looking at the vote, there were really two ways to look at this. I believe that there was, there was a vote that was against this, the concept of this. There was also a segment, I believe, from, that I took from discussion that believed that this represented a reasonable compromise, provided the personnel committee was involved in it in lieu of the ad hoc. And I'm, I'm looking for some help. And clearly, this can be amended to make that effect and in doing so, bring the subsequent amended motion, which is a new motion, a new document, back before the board with the amendment that the personnel committee be the one that's making those, the decisions that are set forth in paragraph, in Roman numeral five. And then, and I look at that last paragraph that's down there, and I'm wondering frankly, and I'd like to get feedback from my fellow trustees, if, if you think that last paragraph can just be struck. When I say the last paragraph, last paragraph on the front page.
Mr. Daley, Dr. Daley, would you like to go to recess for three minutes while we wordsmith this?
Okay, I would.
Then I put the board at ease for three minutes.
Thank you.
Can you help them?
Sure.
The meeting will call to order in one minute. Jordan, you got it taken care of? The meeting is now reconvened. Dr. Daley, did you have an additional motion that you would like to make? Dr. Daley, did you have an additional motion that you would like to make?
I believe there's a copy that Jordan has that he can read. This is an additional motion.
So, talking with Attorney Brickley, so the motion would be a motion to continue the ad hoc committee created on April 22nd, 2024, and to empower the ad hoc committee with the following responsibilities as amended.
And the amendments would be?
And the amendments would be to number five, which is it will be up to the Personnel Committee to recommend to the Board of Trustees the candidates it considers to be the top five candidates for the position of interim president and to schedule a special meeting of the full Board of Trustees to conduct interviews of these candidates. And then for number six, the words that had been struck from it, it will now state to provide to any other member of the Board of Trustees copies of any and all resumes, applications, or other submissions for the position of interim president. And then for the final amended language, on the final paragraph on the first page, there's been language that's been struck, so now the final paragraph.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am.
The motion, the final paragraph would say this motion does not give the ad hoc committee the right to make any offers of employment or to make any promises or representation of salary, benefits, or any other form of compensation.
Period. I so moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and we have a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, roll call vote. Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion passes unanimously. So moved. Next on the agenda, the special presentations. And Mr. Larry Gothra, Budget Development Process.
Thank you, trustees, Chair Everman and trustees. I wanted to take a few minutes today to go through where we're at in the budget process. The budget will be brought to you next month for adoption, the final budget and the initial budget for the next fiscal year, which starts on July 1st. So, next slide. So we have to have a budget for the, under the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act of 1978, also our board policy requires that we adopt a budget each year. Next slide, please. Our process is quite extensive. It starts in April. You can see through the slides here, we go through April and May, and then May, we get the budgets back in, which we did receive last week. Then we go through, compile those, make sure everything balances, make sure we're still within budget of the revenues that we have. I discussed this with the President and the Cabinet, and then we bring those to you at the committee meetings for adoption or any questions you may have. Next slide, please. So involved in the budget process, it's not just me and the accounting team or the President and Cabinet, you can see here many different people. I think I expressed to you, a few of you before, that there were eighty some cost centers. We try to meet in groups, we go through and have Zoom meetings or in-person meetings to develop the budget, have any questions that may come forward, and then set the plan for what we're asking for for the current year. Next slide, please. So, the directions that we give are pretty general, what to consider when you're looking at your budget. Understand each line item, obviously, and what goes into it. This is important so that they know if there's any changes that may occur, things that happened in the past that may not occur again, things that may be happening in the future that were not there in the prior year. So, all those things need to be looked at. We do load a three-year average of expenditures into the budget, that's a pretty good starting point for most people, captures, I'm going to say, ninety-five percent of expenses, and it works going forward. Also, our strategic plan objectives are incorporated into our budget as well in each area. Cost centers have different strategic initiatives, so those also have to be considered. And the one thing is that we try to stress is that we're all very good as human beings when dealing with anything with budgets or money, is that we can see where we need more, always, right? We know I need this next year, I know I need that, or whatever it may be. We're not so good at going back and saying, well, we had that, in this budget, I don't need it again in the upcoming year. So we do ask them to look at both sides of that. Next slide, please. Significant college expenditures. The board sets the number of full-time equivalent positions that is allowed to be filled, that is four hundred and sixty-six, that's been the same ever since I've been here, and I know that it predates me as well. So we go through in each one of the departments, you can see the FTEs that have been, staffed are filled for twenty-three, twenty-four. This will change on a monthly basis as people come and go. We have, as you can imagine with the number of people that we have here, there's some people who leave, there's people who come, and there's always this constant rotation that we have going on. So, this is a static number I'm showing you that we set the budget for upcoming year. The four hundred and sixty-six positions don't change, but there will be a lot of differences within those three categories that we have. Other significant expenditures that we have, fringes, so this is all the benefits for our employees, you have health insurance, hard cap, retirement, which is the MIPSers, the state-funded and optional retirement plan. Other expenditures that we have that are pretty much set, there's not much we can do with those, utilities, insurance, license and permits, especially in the ITS area, supplies, bad debts, and again, bad debts are those amounts that we don't collect mainly due to students that receive federal awards and that do not fulfill the obligation, those awards, and those have to be refunded. Required transfers, we do have transfers for scholarships, Perkins managed, copiers, library books that we fund each year that come out of the general fund. And then contracted services that are other than contracted personnel is another area that we, and this is another area that we do ask people to look at significantly, especially contracted personnel, and planning out what their needs are, and identifying the number of people and what the cost will be for each one of those lines. So, between these two, you can see that seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of our budget is in wages and benefits. Other expenditures, about seventeen to eighteen percent. So there isn't a lot of additional discretionary line items that are being budgeted. Revenues for this year, we're planning and projecting tuition, the board did authorize a three-point-one percent tuition increase, which will start in the fall semester. We are conservatively estimating a flat enrollment from the end of 2023. We did have a considerable enrollment growth this year, but we did go into this year budgeting a four percent decline, so we're just going to reset that and start at the end of 2023 and say this is our baseline going forward. Property taxes, inflationary increase, I say three to three and a half percent, but it's probably been closer to five, as you know, the headly rollback allows us to have a five percent increase, or the CPI, which is, this year, the CPI factor for this calculation is five-point-one percent. So we're anticipating a five percent. State aid is two percent, based on what we are seeing from all the chambers. The consensus bill has not come out yet, but that's what we're anticipating. Ballenger Trust, this is estimated quarterly, again, this is all indicative or dependent upon the markets and the performance of those markets. There's a rolling twelve months, so that means that it does smooth out. So any huge dips, we won't see that same decrease in that year. Any huge gains, we won't see that in that year either. Grants and other auxiliary interest income, interest income, we're anticipating considerably more, we are averaging about five, just over five percent on our investments. Future funding is another revenue source for us, or funding source, I should call it. Keep in mind that that was our HERF dollars that we retained, we're bringing those forward, trying to, until we get to a point where we have stabilized our enrollment from pre-pandemic levels. Next slide, please. Other funds, there are other funds that we have, and really, we look at the impact to the general fund. We have designated, you can see the several designated funds that we have, meaning the scholarships, student clubs, technology, peers' community. We have auxiliary funds, maintenance and replacement, debt retirement, building in site, and bond funds. The bond funds and the maintenance and replacement are pretty much set on the bond funds, on the payments that we have to make on our existing debt, the interest and principal, and the building in sight is set aside, and we are setting aside monies each year for that, for future capital needs that we may have, especially if we did not have the bond support. That is the budget process, I just wanted to go over two other quick things with you. I just wanted to let you know that the college did receive a credit rating reaffirmation on April 11th, standard impores, did reaffirm an A-plus credit rating. They did cite stable and diverse economic base with steady property value growth, and then steady, albeit modest, enrollment growth, and the final one was capable and steady leadership team with sound financial management practices. So that's very good news for the college as well. Last slide. We did issue our bonds back on April 22nd, we had seven bidders for our bonds, and you can see that the seven bidders, the high was, excuse me, the low was PNC Capital Markets, the high was Morgan Stanley and Company, pretty good interest rate spread when you're talking thirty-five million dollars that we had borrowed. But you can see going out, it goes out six places, most places don't do that, but these bonds, they stagger them and set them in ways with different premiums and discounts and front-loading interest in the years, and just trying to get what the best rate they can get. So, that's why it goes out those many places, but we did award it to PNC Capital Markets. We received our funds, they're in our account, and you'll be seeing many resolutions coming forward tonight as we start to spend those. And that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Daley.
Larry, through the chair to you. Do we, my understanding is the revenues that come into the college all get deposited initially within the general fund, and then if there's any restrictions on those, then they get transferred to the appropriate budget activity, is that?
Yeah, so the grant, and the grants and the other general fund revenues, that's the way that would work. Our debt funds, our tax collection as such, goes straight into a debt account that we have.
And then where you're listing the, in the expenditures required, you list the bad debts, that's the amount of college, or amount of money that the college is having to provide to cover defaults to the college, is that correct?
Yes, by and large, that's ninety-nine percent of it, we may have a few other write-offs and like some rents or something that we would not collect.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, trustees? Saying none, thank you very much, I'll see you later.
Thanks.
Moving on. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from April 22nd. Ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Are there any corrections or changes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I'm just going to ask that I be excused from voting on this because while I listened to it on YouTube, it wasn't very clear, and I didn't get all of the meetings, so I request that I be excused from voting on the minutes.
Correctly, so that since you were not in attendance at the meeting, you would not be allowed to vote for the minutes on that. Thank you, sir. The motion passed. Informational reports. Finance report. Chair Swanson?
There was no meeting.
Okay. Personnel? Wendy?
There was no meeting.
Board policy? No meeting was held. Calls and objectives?
No meeting.
Ad hoc committee? Yes, we met, and we've taken care of all of that stuff so far. New business. Item 1.99, Treasuries Report for April 22nd. Is there a motion to receive, item number 1.99? Mr. Reyes?
So moved.
There's a motion to receive it? Is there a second?
Support.
We have a second. Are there any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those in pay, nay. The ayes have it. Item 2.0. Southern Lakes Brank Cracker Waterline Installation Purchase Award. Yes, Mr. Swanson?
Mr. Chair, item 2.00 through 2.06, are any of those time-sensitive?
Mr. Whitney? Could you please respond to that for us? And the question was, the items 2.00 to 2.06, and where two of them you might not know.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You do know that you can't just call Mr. Whitney up here, that you're supposed to speak to me to do that?
Mr. Whitney, please stay, don't walk away. Don't want you walking away mad. Okay, I would like Mr. Whitney to come forward so he can respond to this for us.
So, I'd like Mr. Gothra to be present, and you come up there. Rod, come on.
Please, Rod. In case you didn't hear it, the question was asked about 2.00 to 2.06. If, is that correct, Mr. Swanson?
Correct.
Correct. Are any of those time-sensitive? And if so, which ones and why?
So I think we can speak to 2.00 to 2.04, the five and the six would have to be Mr. Chappelle. But, so I'd like the clarification, what do you mean by time-sensitive?
We can't hear you as well, Larry.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, with clarification of what you meant by time-sensitive.
Well, I have not, for various reasons, I have not had a chance to review all this, and if it's not time-sensitive, I would like to put it off to our next meeting if we could.
So, the way I would answer that is that, a couple things, so each one would be separate. So the SLBC water main line installation, these all have been bid, and there is a timeframe on the contracts that we'd have to execute, so I'm not sure how long they would hold pricing. The other ones are, well, I'm sorry, 2.01, the system upgrade, there is almost a year lead time on ordering this equipment, so any time that we order, it's going to just push it back another, whatever that time is, a month, two months. So we're trying to get this stuff, this will not be done till next summer, but we have to order it now, and we may actually have to store it on premises until it can be installed. Parking ramps H and J, that work needs to be done this summer, so we're talking, it's May now, so yeah, we would want to start next month to have the three months in the summer to do those repairs. And then roofing repairs, Rod, you want to speak to the roofing repairs?
Yeah. So here again, that is time-sensitive as well, we want to take advantage of the weather conditions, the warm weather conditions, in order to have proper adhesion, adhesion on those roofs, so I would consider that time-sensitive as well.
And the next ones?
Campus architect, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. So the campus architect wouldn't be time-sensitive, we do, IDS is our current architect, obviously, I'm sure they would be amenable to doing it month-to-month or going that route until the board would take action.
And then the next two, Randy has to sit there to give us.
Trustees, President? For the next two, first is the network replacement resolution, it would be, we'd need to make sure that the RFPs would be held, I don't know if it'd be, it's another thirty days, that could be a concern, I don't know if they would hold those another thirty days, those pricings, and for the last one, the Lucian SaaS Migration and EduNav Resolution, that one has the EduNav component, which is a desired feature for our students, and to support student services and providing the best student service possible, and I know that is a desired additive to be deployed over the summer, and if we're going to get it out over the summer, that's going to be a tricky one for us, if we can't start till next month.
Any other questions before he steps down? Thank you very much.
Do you have other questions, Mr. Swanson?
No, I, just, Mr. Chair, I haven't been able to review these, and I cannot vote on them at this time.
So, are you asking? Are you asking to table them?
Well, yeah, if, or the vote can go on without me, but personally, I-
We have to vote, one way or the other, you would have to vote. Or you can make a motion to table these to the next meeting.
Well, then I make a motion to table these to the next meeting.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Reyes?
The question was asked whether any of these were time-sensitive, and four of them were identified as being time-sensitive, just- were identified as being time-sensitive. Just wondering what all the motion encompasses.
The motion involves tabling these at this time.
All of them?
He had motioned for all of them to be tabled. Therefore, we can table them to the next meeting, and there will be a meeting soon.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just, because he asked the question whether something was time-sensitive, the answer came back yes, but then the motion was still made. So I wanted to make sure for clarification purposes that he didn't mean just the ones that were deemed not time-sensitive, or if he meant all of them.
Okay. So, you meant all of them?
Yes, I won't be able to vote on all of them.
So, you want to, but, and then further to your question, Art, there is going to be a special meeting that takes place because we will send out the RFP, and then the committee will look at them, and then there will be a special meeting before our regular meeting in June. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
So, Jeff, to your question, I did, I attended the evening session where we went through all these. They were very well researched, appropriate, explained like why it has to be done, you know, why it should be done. I think it was very well presented, and I was extremely comfortable with it from a fiduciary perspective. I believe, and these are, some of these are really critical things that the college needs to get on now. I know that just even getting contractors to commit to anything right now is a nightmare, and you lose them, they're going to go on to the next job and they'll find the work. So, at this point, I just, I understand when to table, you know, not having the information, but I feel very comfortable with the information that was provided. I mean, I, you know, if there was a time issue of just being able to move the meeting forward, I'd say just batch it all together and do one because it would allow the college to do its job. So, I would be very nervous about waiting even a day because I know in construction, if I lose a day, it's going to be a six-month delay, so.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Dr. Daley?
Mr. Chair, through the, through the President, I'd like to ask the Finance Director, Gothra, a question on the, getting those item numbers again. And I apologize, I'm just a little slow coming back. What were the numbers that you said were, that you recommended approval? Just give me the numbers.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear that. So as far as the ones that would be critical, I believe 2.00, it's not critical from a standpoint of just cost, as it was explained in that, in that, as I, when I went through, was that, you know, it's done well.
It should have come to me.
It's on a, well, we're on a well there. It affects our fire suppression system. We've had the circuit board, or the well pump has gone out. The, where the circuit board is located is in a hole in the ground that's very wet. It's not very safe. We have to get, if something happens here, we have to get actually someone with additional skills or certifications to go in there. Anytime the power's gone out there, we've had to do fire watches, which meant we had to have people walk the buildings while it's occupied and log their activity, and this is required by the Fire Marshal. So that, that one is something that I would say that is time-sensitive and critical.
Yeah.
The mechanical system upgrade, again, this is...
What was that number?
I'm so sorry. That was 2.00 was SLBC. 2.01, the mechanical system upgrade. This again is our aging. And I do want to mention that this, these were all brought to you in February when we were contemplating the issuance of bonds. So these are all of these bond projects that was brought forth. But this again, we have aging mechanical systems on this campus. They're failing, and we need to get them repaired. Otherwise, we have obviously comfort issues and buildings that are inoperable or that we can't hold classes in. Lead times on this is, I'm being told, it's almost a year. So the longer we wait, the longer then we have to wait to put it in, and then we only have a certain amount of time that we can do this. We have to do the chillers in the, in the summer, and then the boilers, no, the opposite, chillers in the winter, and then boilers in the summer. So we have to time this. The parking ramp H and J, if these don't get fixed, then we're going to have to shut them down. There's repairs in those. They're assessed each and every year by Walker Consultants, our parking consultants and engineers, and those, I mean, those decks are almost 50 years old. They're at the end of their life as well. So we're just trying to maintain these, extend them for a few more years. But if we don't do this, then we're going to have to shut the decks down potentially, based on what the safety consultants come back and say. We did have to shut them down before and do these repairs, and then reopen them back up again. Roofing repairs, I mean, this is just leaks in the roofs, right? The longer we wait, the bigger, greater chance we have. We're not replacing all of our roofs. We're just, we're replacing or repairing the ones that are most critical need right now. So, and then the campus architect, like I said, that's not, I would not tell anybody that was critical.
Okay.
Did you want, Randy?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of my colleagues?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question of my colleagues?
Before you do, did you want to hear the one that Mr. Chappell shared that was a, you know, one that needed to be done?
The parks one?
Yeah.
Thank you. So the Illution SAS Migration EDUNAV Resolution, that is directly related to our students in registering for classes and getting things done. That system has been, is something that will assist our students and also our staff in helping them place students properly and also schedule properly, picking the right classes. It's something that's been sought, and it's something that's desired to have in place by fall. And if we delay 30 days, I don't know if I can, our team will be able to make those deadlines.
And what item number is that?
2.06.
2.06?
2.06.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Daley?
I'm of approval of items 2.00, 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, and 2.06. As brief to us.
Support.
There's currently a motion on the floor that's been seconded. The motion right now is Swans, Trustee Swanson, motion to table item 2.00 to 2.06 until the next meeting with Trustee Couch seconding the motion.
I withdraw that motion.
We have a withdraw, and then Dr. Daley, you're, what did you want to do?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of items 2.00, 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, and 2.06, as brief to us tonight.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have further discussion on items 2.00, 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, and 2.06? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. So we have, the ayes have it. Item 2.04, Campus Architect Purchase Award. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 2.05, Network Replacement Resolution.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
There was one nay by Trustee Couch.
I'm sorry?
There was one nay by Trustee Couch for item 2.04.
And Jeff, were you a nay?
I'm a one.
On 2.04?
No, I'm a gay.
You were a gay? Okay. So we just have one nay. All right. Now we have 2.05, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Network Replacement Resolution. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Support.
We have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
We have one nay, and the rest are, okay. Point, 2.06.
We already did that one.
What's that?
We already did that.
You did it?
We got six votes.
06 was already done as 07.
We already did that one, Mr. Chair.
2.07, Approval of the Proclamation of the RFP for the Search for the Position of President. And we've already done this, so.
We're on 10.
What's that?
10. We're on 10.
Okay. No contract renewal, no appointments of administrative hires until appointed by the Board of Trustees until new president is installed. This is an item, just a minute before you guys ask questions, because I've got to explain this. This came up in the committee to put the agenda together. We didn't have a attorney with us at the time. What this deals with is to, according to the Michigan Community College Act, that the board has to approve all of these things. Do we need to do this while we don't have a president, that things come to the board? So what's going to happen with this? There's no motion, there's nothing that needs to be done. This is more of an informational, that the Bylaws Committee will discuss this and see if it needs to be brought back as a motion and a policy. Currently, the way our bylaws are written, the authority is vested in the president to do this, but the Michigan Community College Act says the board doesn't. So we just want to make sure that that's what we want to do while we're going through the interim process. That's just the informational report on it. Yes, Dr. Beverly?
So, I just want to reiterate that during that meeting, I did say that it would be detrimental to the college if that was to move forward. You have to understand that this is the critical time for the college right now, in the summer, for the hiring, for the contracts, to get everything ready for school. So I loved how Jason Wilson said it. He said, "We're filling classes that we may not have faculty to teach because we can't hire them because we can't sign the contracts." If you want to know how many contracts, I almost do two to three a day, just me. And if we have to wait to a meeting, you're going to stop the college from running because there will be no ability. So I'm talking about, we all love LERTA. LERTA won't be happening because you've got all these faculty for LERTA that have to have their contracts signed. You've got the maintenance of all of these buildings that have to take place just to get ready. You've got the software, the technology that the faculty need so that the students can have what they need from day one when school starts. So I am just trying to make sure that you think very strongly about what this is saying because I do not think you have the capacity to do this, which is why it's dedicated as part of the job of the president. What I would offer as a suggestion, if this is something that you want to make sure during the interim that you are aware, is what Jeff had said before when we were talking about, I think it was the signing of contracts of over 50,000 or something like that. But having the person that sits in the seat be able to do things, to keep things moving, and then at the meetings, they alert you to what they have done. That way, you know everything that is happening for that responsibility, and you're not in the dark about how it's happening and all of that. So I'm just putting that out there for you that if it were to be handled just by the board, it will stop the operations of the college, and it's not going to be good for us. And I don't think that's what you want to do. I think you just want to be aware of what's happening.
Yeah, agree.
Any other questions or comments from board members regarding, yes, Dr. Daley?
I, in looking at this, I don't believe the intent. I know what's down there in writing, and I know we live with what's in writing, but I don't believe the intent of this was to go down to that level, to implement manage, if you would, that higher. But to look at, I'll just share with the board my experience as a city manager and as a CEO for a public organization, that every place I've ever been, there were internal controls involved when it came to the, for instance, the hiring of a department head, that the board approved that, that that offer would be made by whoever the CEO was, but that the final approval would lay with the board as the agency. And so that's, that's, I think that's the thrust of this, is more on, at internal control, not to be an obstacle to the hiring of faculty members, which you need to teach classes and that kind of thing. And, you know, perhaps we could talk and reach a middle ground?
Any other comments? Seeing none, that will go to the Bylaws Committee, and they will come back with some recommendation one way or the other. Item 2.11, Strategic Planning on Hold Until a New President is Installed. Currently, we have a strategic plan that is underway. One of the things that encourages potential candidates and future presidents to come is to know that they can have the opportunity to work on and create the strategic plan for the college. This item, 2.11, is to place it on hold until such point as a new president is installed. Is there a motion for this? As soon as we have a motion, in a second, you will speak on this. Do we have a motion?
I don't think you have to have a motion.
Can we get all the information first before motions are made? So at least we make motions that are relevant. I mean, Dr. Beverly can give us some information, because I mean, I wasn't aware that we were doing any strategic planning.
Mr. Freeman, you have not been recognized.
You know, but, well, you won't do it anyway, so you don't, you won't even recognize the person to your left, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion, and then we can hear from Dr. Beverly? If not, the point will be mute.
Well, I feel this needs to be discussed, and as Dr. Daley said, without a motion, we can't discuss it. Is...
That's the way, I understand Robert's Rules of Order. That is my ruling. If there's a motion, a second, then we can have discussion.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah, I'm so moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Dr. Daley. Now, discussion. Dr. Beverly, you were the first one to raise your hand, so we'd like your comment.
I was. The reason, as you know, the strategic plan does end December 30th, and for our accreditation purposes, we have to be following a strategic plan. So, so let me make sure you understand that one. But as a new president, the last thing that you want on your plate is to have to help to create a strategic plan. That's not something, I mean, it's a, it's a long drawn-out process, and it's... and it's better if you've already gotten all of the feedback so that when you, because I'm thinking the person will be joining somewhere by January 1, hopefully, that it's already massaged with what people are thinking, with what the board is thinking. And you can then go in and then start the actual goal setting at that point so that you are a part of it. I, I don't think that that's going to be attractive, that the first thing you have to do is the strategic plan. I know for me, it was good it had already been done when I got here. And we followed it until it was time for the next one to be done because I could read and see and hear from people exactly where they wanted to go. None of that's going to change with the new person. The board still has their priorities. The people still are saying the same things. It's already done for you. It's a great thing. So that was why, for me, that I continue the process and even have the person that's an expert to work on it so that you all can make sure you're ready, so that person knows where you want to go.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Reyes?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Daley?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The strategic plan will be placed on hold. Unfinished business, item 1.97, amendment to board policy 4410.
Mr. Chair, can we go back for, for point of clarification on item 2.10? And what the discussion, or not any action, but what was discussed on what the item would move over?
It's going to the bylaws committee and they will come back with a recommendation.
Are you referring to board policy committee?
Board policy committee. Unfinished business, 1.97, amendment to board policy 4410, purchase, second reading. Is there a motion for this amendment?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Swanson?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Dr. Daley?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Passes unanimously. Item 1.98, amendment to board policy 5008. Is there a motion to change this and accept this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Right, this is the second reading. Regarding the 5008, Bill and I had not got a chance yet to finish writing something up yet. He was on vacation. So I ask that we just bring this back to committee.
So you want to send this back to committee? Okay. Is there objection from the board? Without, so moved. Administrative items, president's report. Dr. Beverly?
We have a lot of people that we are celebrating today, so I'm going to start with, looks like VP Wilson. Hey, VP Wilson. We're going to celebrate several people in your area.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Beverly, Mr. Chair, trustees. We're going to, this is Al, nice guy, Al, everybody knows Al. We're going to talk about really some amazing accomplishments in our athletics program. And I also want to talk with you about a phenomenal student as well, so. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. So first up, I'd like to tell everybody about our women's golfer. So those of you that don't know, we started women's golf. This is our second year. So Mott has had athletics, we can clap for that, I'm excited about it. Mott's had athletics for roughly 90-plus years. We've had a men's golf team pretty much that entire time. Under the leadership of VP Wilson and Dr. Beverly, we were able to add women's golf this, a year ago. And this year, I'm happy to report, we already have our first golfer qualifying for nationals. She is competing, actually today was her first day of competition in Melbourne, Florida. She's currently 44th out of a field of about 100 and we are incredibly proud of that and incredibly proud of her and expecting big things as she is a freshman, so she'll be coming back next year.
What's her name?
Her name is Cameron Johnston. Yep. Next up, we're recognizing Mackay Ellison. Mackay is transferring to Stetson University. It is in Florida. He is a graduate of Carmen Ainsworth, so a local men's basketball player that we've had. Mackay, all of you know how strong our men's, men's basketball program is. Has incredibly rich history. Mackay broke the all-time career points record for Mott, which is pretty remarkable. Yeah, that in and of itself. And, and just to give you a quick update on him, this past weekend, he was in Vegas at the invitation-only NJCAA All-Star game. So he was very close to being the MVP, but came a little bit short, had scored 15 points, so pretty fantastic. Next up, we'd like to honor our softball team. Our softball team had, so we won the Eastern Conference, you can see some of the data up there. We won the Eastern Conference, I believe, for the first time since 2018 and we had basically one of, if not the best, seasons we've had on record. And that is under the leadership of, of second-year head coach Terry Warner. He's in the crowd right now, Terry.
Did you introduce him? Could you stand up?
We are incredibly proud of the girls, incredibly proud of the team. We went to the regional finals this year. We felt just a little bit short, three to one to Lake Michigan College. We have a ton of talent coming back next year and we are super confident, confident that Terry and the girls are, are going to make a trip to nationals soon, so. That is the athletics update.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you. And last but not least, big congratulations to Jenna Morrison. Jenna was named a 2024-25 Newman Civic Fellow. This is a very prestigious honor that customarily is really given to university students, but as usual, Mott distinguishes, distinguishes itself on the national stage in what we do with our students. The Newman Civic Fellows will have access to various virtual and in-person learning opportunities, including competitive mini grant funding opportunities for social impact projects, monthly online leadership webinars and mentorship with a local mentor. And I wanted to read a quote that Jenna provided as a part of her nomination. "Learning about the challenges of others and seeking to help in practical ways has fostered my intellectual and personal growth and enabled me to form relationships. I believe being present in each moment and meeting individuals with love and kindness is powerful enough to bridge differences, create communities and change the world one person at a time." I thought that was phenomenal as she said that. Our students really are phenomenal and we can learn a lot from our students.
Can you go ahead and do that enrollment update?
I can. Thank you very much. Next slide there, Erin. Okay, for May, our enrollment continues to be strong for the summer. As of 5/16, our head count was 3,076 students. This represented a 9.3% increase from the comparative year. As Larry mentioned, we're not going year to year, we're going backwards one year just so we can study what makes sense. Our contact hours, 26,051, that's an 8.1% increase from the comparative, comparative year. Fall, we're off to a strong start as well, 26,59, a 17.7% increase. And contact hours are 26,812.5, which is a 16.1% increase. So our enrollment, we're going on several consecutive semesters of strong enrollment. The entire college needs to be celebrated for that from our partners.
Let's do that, let's do that.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that. Certainly a team effort, I could list everybody. Just a couple of quick notes here, we're having a Michigan Reconnect event on campus on June 8. This is Reconnect 2.0. We have been recognized as one of the leaders in the state in relationship to Michigan Reconnect and bringing in former students. Thank you for your vote to approve the EDUNAV package. A lot of the students in our area have had some credits with Mott. The EDUNAV package will allow us to streamline those better and get them out sooner, so thank you for that. Financial aid, if you've been paying attention just nationally to financial aid, you know that there's been some problems with the rollout of the application. The application is out. Currently, we're at about 3,000 students that we have awarded. That is behind from we were, where we were a year ago, for obvious reasons. You know, the FAFSA was out in October for the last cycle. It just came out late, I believe in January. So we're going to expect a big catch-up through the summer. We realize that financial aid is a direct threat to our enrollment, so a lot of outreach happening right now to get students to fill out that FAFSA. And outreach throughout the summer. You will see us in events all over. Trustee Figaro loves to see us downtown at Back to the Bricks and other things like that, so we will be around. And so definitely you're invited to join us, want to round, but we certainly want to get the word out.
Dr. Daley, do you have a question? Turn your microphone on, please.
In your, in your graph, you're giving us a percentage, you're showing us compared to a comparison year. And perhaps I missed that, what was the comparison year?
The comparison year was 22-23 year. This was the year that we felt like it was best to measure ourselves again based on the significant increases that we had last year. So we wouldn't want to go year to year, it's an anomaly.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final two updates, I'll do them together. Medical legal, I know the chair has interest in that, Durham facility as well. I met with the architects and Dr. Bush on May 2 to discuss both of those projects. Good meeting with Dr. Bush. He enlightened me about the medical legal space, so much so that myself, him and AVP Matthews will meet again on May 30 to look at what next steps would be to launch a program like that. I also met with our, 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 our architect, sorry about that, on May 2 and gave them the name of the college, San Juan College in New Mexico. They have contacted the college. We had a follow-up meeting with them today and I was unable to kind of stay in that meeting, but my colleague Rod Whitney, the dean of health science, was in that meeting, so I will get a follow-up report from them. They did have some sample blueprinting and graphs to look at, but I have not had an opportunity to look at those.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
So next, I would like to have Lynetta Coney to please come forward. And I believe Dale Wayhill would like to share her latest honor.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Chair, trustees. Last week, our chapter at Mott of the American Association of Women in Community Colleges held their annual gathering. It's a luncheon where they give out some scholarships, but also they honor the women who make this institution run. And clearly, one of those is the, my colleague in advancement, Mrs. Lynetta Coney, who's the president of the foundation for Mott Community College and also the executive director of College and Community Advancement, has been with this institution. I know you'll correct me. Is it 38 years? 36, I was rounding up. So 36 years at Mott Community College. I think we've all known, give her a round of applause just for that. And as if we didn't know she was an influential woman at Mott Community College, they decided to formally name her that for the year 2024 and they asked her if she would be their keynote speaker and she gave some wonderful remarks of inspiration for all the women in our AAWCC chapter. And let me just say, a little bit off script, but this chapter was started by our president. It's part of her legacy. There are members in the audience. And she challenged us, and Lynetta challenged us at that microphone, which was up there, to keep this chapter going and to keep this investment in female leadership going at this institution. And so Lynetta, I'll ask you to say a few words about being an influential woman.
Well firstly, I'd like to say that I am very grateful for that recognition. But most particularly, I want to say with AAWCC, it is such a vital vehicle for women in higher education, community college movement. When I started, it'll soon be 37 years in September, but when I started, we didn't have this type of, of support or this type of medium to be able to empower females in higher education. I just got lucky because I picked mentors and asked them to get me involved with AAWCC events elsewhere. But we have it right here for all of our female students and then we have male members as well. So I'm just grateful for the recognition. It is something that is my life's work and I am looking forward to continuing to make sure that the females who come behind me get this kind of experience. Who knows, maybe when I retire, I'll be a mentor. But I'm still on fire for helping empower women in higher education. And I thank you for this time. Next we'll have Mr. Robert Matthews, if he would come forward. Mr. Matthews called me, I believe, on Friday and was so excited to share with me out of the blue. He had been invited to attend the White House Business Leaders Summit. And I said, "Take me with you." And he said, "It says..."
And he said, "It says non-transferable." We know all the things that Robert has done for the workforce in his time here at Mott Community College. He has been here 20, what, years?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years, yes. He was just a pup when he started.
Very much so.
But now he's a grown dog, so. But he has shown that leadership across the nation of what you can do to ensure that our students have the best workforce advantages. I am always astounded when they do something else newer and better and more innovative. And we go out to other colleges and they say, "Oh, we're doing this." And I'm like, "Well, that was like five years ago." You know, so they're always cutting-edge, which is why when they needed people to attend this, I know it's why Robert's name came up. He is an outstanding workforce leader. We're so happy that you chose to stay here for 27 years at Mott Community College, and congratulations at this pinnacle of success.
Thank you so very much, and I will just say that I am honored to represent Mott Community College wherever I go, Flint and Gennese County, and I will make sure that I am fully participating, representing as well, and absorbing and bringing back knowledge that will benefit this community.
Now I'll have AVP Noat. She's going to introduce our new hires.
Hello. Continuing this celebratory message, Madam President, Chair, and Trustees, I'm happy to introduce the two new hires in May. We have Joshua Bryant on the screen. He's a career navigator for the Immigrant Success Grant and Workforce. He started May 13th. He has a bachelor's degree in Spanish from Grand Valley State University, two and a half years' experience working at the Latinx Technology Community Center as a program assistant and a program coordinator, and a site supervisor of the Youth Leadership And our second hire for May is Willie Bray. He's a custodian in maintenance and operations. He started also May 13th. He's a graduate of Flint Northern High School, has 20 years of a custodian experience from MTA, which is the Mass Transportation Authority here in Flint, and he's a maintenance technician at Heatherwood Apartments. And that concludes our new hires.
And that concludes the president's report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lanias Business, are there any board-generated ideas this evening? Seeing none, do we have any closed session to go to this evening? Seeing none, comments from the board members? Mr. Freeman?
Yes. So I just wanted to do a recognition of Dr. Beverly and all she's done here at the college. You know, when I was board chair, we always had a relationship that was based on kindness and cooperation, and most importantly, respect. So I trusted her to be honest and open with me about what was going on in the college, and then I was, you know, I worked with her, giving, you know, my advice on working with the board, that it was a great time. The board operated really well. We got a lot of work done, and I know that sometimes I get really frustrated at meetings and my temper explodes. It's because I care so much about the college, and I think about all the work that went into, you know, just my service on the board and how important it is to me. And, you know, when I feel like we're misstepping, I get really heated about it. Dr. Beverly's always been, she's always called me down too, and helped me with that. And so I just, you know, on behalf of the board, I just want to apologize for any time that you ever felt that you weren't being provided with kindness and cooperation and respect, because you worked very hard to do that, and, you know, we aren't perfect. You know, we don't all do our homework, as we probably should, and it's a two-way street, and that's the most important thing. So I just think that it should be noted, you know, like tonight, there was a couple times that I kind of winced because it was like that you should be shown the respect of your position, so I apologize for that. You know, in talking about this board and what we are doing, and, you know, like, I'm very hopeful at some points where, you know, I see where we can come together and we do, you know, we can work together, and I have hope. And then, you know, sometimes though, I think that we're being divided or we're not being given all the information that we should. You know, we had an incident, which it wasn't on the agenda, and I talked to the board attorney about discussing it, and he suggested that public comment would be the time to do it. But we had an incident with one of our staff members where procedure wasn't followed, Dr. Beverly wasn't consulted. You know, a board member took it upon themselves to go in and, you know, intimidate one of our staff members. Of course, it had to be, then it was, you know, our board chair, so it had to move on to our vice chair, who then basically buried it. And so essentially, we should all have been given access to the information, the complaint. The complaint was submitted to the vice chair so that we could all see what the nature of that complaint was and not just second-hand information. So we don't have that. I'm very concerned about that because we should, any area of legal liability or complaint should be taken seriously because what is the message we're sending to everybody else on the campus? They don't feel safe to actually come to the board because they were told that an investigation, a one-person investigation took place, and there's no problem, so no reason to give us that information. So we should all be given that right to see what's coming at the board, every single individual person. So I'm still hopeful that we will get a copy of the complaint. We deserve it. We should be able to look at it. Sue, it's still my turn. So I see that you're.
Just heard my draw.
Well, I know, but I'm, this is my time, and you're on, I can see. So yes, we should get this information. And then, you know, from the public perspective, where people are looking at us and saying that we don't, you know, we don't follow Robert's rules, we don't appreciate, you know, Open Meetings Act, I mean, all these things that are said about us, I would rather just, I know that's not the case. We're working really well together, and we should be as transparent as we possibly can. But like this is an incident that I believe we should be made aware of, and then we can actually weigh on exactly what happens related to that. Because once upon a time, you know, first day of, you know, the chairs, you know, their time here, we had an incident with another staff member that was never really fully addressed, resolved, or not even an apology given. So this is, going back to my comments about leadership, we don't abuse, we don't intimidate, and we definitely don't disrespect, and that is, that's true leadership. And if you feel like you have to do that in order to get respect, perhaps you should reevaluate whether or not you should have that position.
Janet, before you go, before you go, let's have Mr. Reyes speak first, and we'll have his comments.
I wholeheartedly agree with the sentiments expressed by Michael, and I also would like to thank Dr. Beverly for your work, hard work, your vision, and your inspiration that you've provided to this college and this community. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you for these now seven years for me, and I wish you absolutely the best.
Thank you. Sue, would you like to speak?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to address Mr. Freeman. I'm in compliance with Board Policy 1325. And Mr. Brickley, please read this policy 1325 for trustee Freeman so he can understand it.
All right. The board has a policy in 1325 which is titled Code of Conduct Ethics, and there's a procedure outlined within this board policy procedure which says this, "If the college receives a complaint that a board member has violated this policy, the complaint shall be referred to the board chairperson, or if the complaint is against the chairperson, to the vice chairperson. The trustee who is the subject of the complaint shall be notified and given an opportunity to respond to the chairperson or vice chairperson, if appropriate, who at his or her discretion shall determine whether to take the complaint to the full board for consideration." It goes on further, but I think those are the points you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, it's my discretion.
Okay. And just from my own personal knowledge, from my understanding, is Mr. Everman was advised of the nature of the complaint, and you talked to Mr., you talked to the person who made the complaint as well?
I read the complaint, and I talked to Mr. Everman, and they both actually said the same thing. No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All I have is, Dr. Beverly, thank you. It's been a pleasure. I'm not really sure who's going to write my notes so I can get home to the wife now, but we'll figure that out.
Thank you. Wendy?
Dr. Beverly, I haven't worked with you very long, but I do wish you well in everything that you do in the future, so thank you so much.
Dr. Daly?
First of all, it's good to be back. And for those of you that don't appreciate this, I'm actually about 108 pounds lighter than I was when I started this mess. And it wasn't, believe me, it was, it was an uphill battle, and I expect to be going home a week from tomorrow, and then hopefully within a couple of weeks after that, ditch this thing and get back to work. Mott Community College is a very special organization, and I want to tell you, I believe that during the past 10 years, we've had a very good gardener that's kept us going and headed in a good direction. We can't, one of the things that I've learned over the years as a leader is you have to do what you believe to be right, and to, you cannot make decisions that are there for the masses because you simply can't satisfy everyone. And during the short time that I got to physically know Dr. Beverly, because she knows that I came on with the advent of COVID, and I was actually on the board for a year before I physically met Dr. Beverly, we had a lot of phone calls, but it was at a conference up in Traverse City, and that was the first time we'd met face-to-face. And this is all about respect and communication. It's just that simple. And my granddaddy, who was, did a lot to raise me, told me that and taught me that, that the first thing you do is treat everyone like you like to be treated, and it's just that simple. And everyone brings a different view to this, to this, and I believe we can, by working together, we reach consensus, and it may not be the perfect solution for everyone, but it's one that moves the community forward and gets, keeps us at our job of being sure that we're producing graduates that have the critical training and education that's necessary to be a good provider and to contribute to our world today, because we need all the help we can get. So thanks, I thank the board for its support. When I was, when I've been going through the illness, I'm still a little bit shaky, as you've probably been able to tell, but I think I'm looking forward to being back and working with you and with the public again, so thank you very much. Dr. Beverly, thank you.
And Dr. Beverly, we wish, I wish you well in your future endeavors. Thank you for having served our community for the past 10 years. And Dr. Daly, welcome back. It's been a year. It's glad to have you back on the board and working with us and making your impact. It's been a very good, interesting evening. Thank each of you. And that concludes.
Motion to adjourn?
Our meeting for this evening.
Second.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.